So we're here to share.
I'd like to call the December development agency meeting to order. First, can we stand and say we apply to show?
I agree with you just to define it. And so we're all about the sustainability of this. Foundation. There's a lot of different agencies out somewhere around. They, your people do it.
First, on the agenda. Andy just pointed out the regular meeting. It's actually the minutes from October tenth, twenty twenty four. Do we have? Can you just look at them and the motion to approve the minutes? Anybody see anything that needs to be changed?
Make a motion.
Cheryl's making a motion. Second. Perfect. All in favor? Aye. You want to oppose? Staying? Great. Communications. We have none. Any public comment? Nobody's on. Chairs report. The only thing I have is I'd like to welcome our new member, Dan Roth, to our team. So we're glad to have you here. And we know there might be some potential. You've been before us for some things. So we know there could be some potentials where you have to abstain, but we're really glad to have your expertise with you and Brett. We really feel that this really covers some desperate area of what we need to cover as far as the county. So I don't know if you want to take a minute to introduce yourself and give us a little background.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I really appreciate it. Being a top caller, sitting on the top of the planning board as well, helping help her build these commercial residential buildings up in County, County region. Excited to bring that knowledge to the board.
What things to look forward to in the county? He is going to be a great addition to the idea. He really has. Oh, I had it for chairs report. Director's report?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Did have a call last week with D O T in Utica, which has another general projects. They have the appropriation maps that they're assessing the modeling here to show the next step. Talkative data for D O T should be okay. Do our donation to D O T then go to. Chris, just one paper. The only other thing I want you to know, we did a meeting earlier today. Our name is E D C. With regards to the M C three issue and the. Transaction. You know, as well, Joe was there. Possibly address, everything went well. Talking to the attorney's side.
It's that it took us two or three tries to get through, you know, and that's either busy state agency, big state agency. Our goal is to make their money easier. They ask. Say no to all of this. So we talked to them, got some ideas from them. But what they would like to see, that is the reason that we sat here and group things around edges. Some of the. Then Paul. Hunter was handling it at Brussels. Fuzzy from, from. Again, yeah, they productions as to how it's going to go, seeing it as other. For example, some matters. Our goal is to put them in a position to say yes, which is why we're working really hard to get even better. Better support. That they're, they can look at everything and say, yeah, this. And what they did, relatively our newest members. So this is just a piece of a transaction in order to make sure that dial-a-general has some access. We're doing our due diligence. Slimmer of land that could prevent the expansion at that facility at the distribution center. So we're just going through some of the proper channels in order to get this transfer over the appropriate way. Just as a brief background, because we just had to jump in. But there was actually two things going on at the chair. Sorry. Okay. What Ken introduced and the. It's always dangerous was the M C three. Yeah. Transfer of funds that the I D A's are holding. Do you want to just do it? Your general overview? Just tell this is helpful for people that are new. Back in the nineties, the M C U D C, which was a separate nonprofit, worked with the I D A's development in the north. Part of that development, there was a number of of stolen sale agreements and leases that provided cash flow to M C U D C through these shell for-profit entities that had created to put together the structures. And see, you see it basically gone bunk and Guy Gay's been holding that money for quite a long time. And the funds have built up. What we're doing is working with Ken and his team providing for the formal dissolution profit and a transfer of that money from to one of the I D A people that's in Montgomery County. In order to dissolve, not the profits, you have to get, among other things, you approve of the attorney general, because the attorney general wants to deny what's the profits and the funds. So that's what the background here. Someone involved, but we're rolling along the process and I think we've got a big milestone number two. So the actual connection with D A G when reviewed, documentation, there's no pushback on what we were proposing. In fact, we kind of talked about a couple of different alternatives. They were very strong and one of those that alternative was him being an alternative that we hadn't started on, which flooded the meeting this afternoon to deal with tweaking and we're on task. And again, based on the action taken in the D A G meeting, we've got a couple of documents signed by the chairman at the meeting, but we should just file all required documents with D A G by the end of this month. That was candidly stated, however, it's fact, it's sort of preliminary back to us within thirty days. And hopefully approval in sixty of the original five hundred fifty. So different talk that once it first quarter of twenty twenty five, they will be done. But file them. Significant amount of money that could be really helpful for, we got other projects coming in. Most of so. But a lot of parts of those impact that for a long time now. Yes, great experiences that working through addicts in the whole course of so. We appreciate it. Anything else other directors? Now, if we could get a motion to go into executive session to discuss some financials. Coming, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Second, just all in favor? Aye. You want to oppose? Staying? We'll go into exec session.
Executive session, no actions were taken in the executive section. Next business item is the financial report, Sheila?
Yeah, so the financial reports are included in your packet. The regular monthly transactions need to have a motion to be approved, the November transaction.
Sheila, I just have a quick question for you.
Oh, how many questions? Next, yeah.
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay.
Any questions on the financial report?
We just need a motion to approve.
Need a motion to approve, I'll make it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, abstentions? Revolving loans.
Yeah, revolving loan fund report is included. Everybody's comment, there's nothing unusual to report. We talked about under five, company financials in the executive session. I think Cheryl's gonna ask me why the interest in Principal is blank for because we've been hurrying it. So they repay, they do two months at a time. So they paid in October for October, November, and Ramon paid, he stayed through November.
Excellent.
So they'll both be due.
And it's good seeing cookies from Brooklyn in the news.
Yeah, big article about expansion.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on the revolving loan funds? Sheila, anything else on marketing report, Vinnie, Andy?
Yeah, so we last two small businesses of the month, we did Kelly's Imperial Lanes, we just went up there the other day. Kelly excited, posted content on the master. Chris Street Diner was the other one, so we're scheduling a trip up there. We had El's Day Out the other week. Kudos to Seth B for putting that up. It's a good day, I got a video, I don't know if I should see it or not.
Sure.
Any kudos? Alright, so I guess it's only, it's a minute. You get to use the drone.
I love them. Does he use the drone every day for?
He knows how much we bought these drones.
I got him. The news is saying there's activity in drone users.
Vinnie, the witness.
We also have McMoyn set up the exit 29 website on the backend. So he can track leads and actually generate people at the diversity. Also, with the new year, he's putting out some ads, he bargains that site as well.
We were gonna talk to Ken, but now that we've reacquired the 829 site, we're gonna go through that website and clean it up. Obviously, it looks different. Add some updated information, because we don't think the, people have been looking at it. I get messages, some robo messages, but also some real messages all the time about our website there, 829. So we're gonna go through, make sure everything's updated, new footage, maybe Vinnie will get his drone again and send everything down there. That's pretty much, that's all I got.
Oh, that's great. Alright, I think he can say something.
She said explain in the background.
No, that's us.
That was Joe sliding out of the light. That's, yeah, I'll send you guys.
Anything else with marketing report, any questions for Vinnie or Andy?
Onto the next, the unfinished business, this is Fox City One LLC. Yeah, this is somebody that you mentioned earlier, Council. This is in relation to Fox City One project, and we do public engagement, we did have the public hearing that's out of the building. Monday, when the front side was available to members, they probably didn't public with them. That's quite the project, and they all were okay with it. Don't see that. Public hearing, the next three resolutions that are in your packet are all associated with Fox City One. And we're going to go through them with your word. Yep, thanks Ken. So first one is the complications, secret terminations. As you know, with identity by financials, that we can now access. Well, in this case, the town, the management board designated this office agency. This issue we got the American Declaration of Effect in 2022. Which basically says the project would not have an adverse effect on anybody. So this resolution, you can add more of that information. You have no reason to put that information. Don't scare the poor people. We did not have any yes. I have to answer a question.
Okay. Alright, let's, let's vote on these as Chris goes through them, so can we take a roll call vote on this resolution?
Sorry, number 24, best 16, we want to take a determination vote.
Second. Thank you, roll call votes will be given.
Yeah, Mark Colter?
Aye.
That back?
Yeah.
Cheryl Reese?
Aye.
Congratulations.
I have to abstain on this one, definitely find more check and approve this project. I have to stay on this one, double playing board check, and approve the project, and help us.
Uh, Edward Watts, that's it, Jessica Seer?
Aye.
Daniel Roth?
Aye.
Motion pass.
I saw you just suck the little pen.
I got the J one.
Yeah. The next one, Chris, do you wanna give us?
Sure, so, uh, as you know, for housing project, the I D A statute authorizes this basis, the project's made a factory or the warehouse of commercial projects. Um, because housing is not specifically a deal, it's a factory. We are very comfortable that it's a commercial project, but pursuant to this resolution, that in terms that it is, they will, according to the statute. But in terms of, according to that argument, yeah, the letter, um, which, how the supervisor, which is town, is support of the project. Nothing that will help that amount of both the area and allow kind of this, fighting for your service, but, so, certain issues, so, if it's a project, then the I D A statute, and it's working, but, but.
So this would be resolution twenty-four seventeen, and again, this is to determine that the project, Log City One, project is a commercial project. And, uh, making certain findings under the general municipal law. We have a motion?
Motion.
Second? A second, need discussion? Or a roll call vote?
Uh, yep, Cheryl Reese?
Aye.
Matt Beck?
Yes.
Mark Walchek?
Aye.
Frank Pettaplace?
No standing.
Edward Watts, that's it, Jessica Seer?
Aye.
Daniel Roth?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Okay, Mr. Trump, I keep going.
More certainly, Ken.
Sure, one more, this is the approving resolution. This approves the I D entering into the documents related to the transaction, uh, sales tax, except for documents. And, I agree, if you look at exhibit A to the resolution, as we always, write a description that expect the public benefits. Uh, as you see in number two, two, four, ten employees expected at the project facility. Uh, and number three, there, one point three million sales tax, these exemptions, uh, two hundred and twelve thousand load tax exemptions, and. Even nine hundred thousand dollars in your property tax exceptions. Also notice that we have approximately the twenty-eight or two-five-six million dollar overall. Having answered your questions.
Any questions? Now, thank you, council. So this will be twenty-four eighteen, this will be the resolution authorizing execution of documents in connection with a lease slash leaseback transaction for a project. For Log City One LLC, we have an offer, resolution? Uh, offer, second? A second, roll call vote, please.
Uh, yeah, Matt Beck?
Yes.
Mark Walchek?
Aye.
Cheryl Reese?
Aye.
Frank Pettaplace?
Jay.
Edward Watts, that's it, Jessica Seer?
Aye.
Daniel Roth?
Here.
Except the record, exception.
So, um, under new business, uh, we have a loan application, this would be twenty-four nineteen, this is the resolution recommending revolving loan fund approval. Uh, for building blocks, childcare, and learnings.
But just remember, this is us working a millionist in the county legislature, so the next steps of this pass, be resolution G.
Thank you, thank you, Ken. Uh, any discussion? If not, can we have an offer for the resolution? Is that what we should say?
Is there, is there a timeframe that we have to be worried about, if it's even?
Um, I would say, yes, it's, um, because of, um, the fact that she has a bad time, okay? So, yeah. She has, um. Have a date in there, I'm sure he would extend it, I just.
Look out for that. I'm confident, that's confident, hasn't been, I mean, we've got a person on the, but it's, but it's, well, the dozen under ratios comfortable.
It's, yeah, I'm looking at it myself, and I mean, I just, I, I'm in this business thirty-one years, and I just look at that income ratios, and I just look at the risk return relationship. I don't feel like taking back the building if somebody walks away, it still saves too much, but I'm willing to take a chance, because she's been at it since two thousand and nineteen. Once, if you survive that long, things that you're making, so.
Yeah, and the thing that, I, I share your concerns, and I did before I asked my questions, but I think. With the, um, with the formula for the additional square fee equalling the additional business, it's a pathway to growth.
So, I'm just worried about aborting that for right now.
Of course, yeah.
Uh, willing to take chances, I'd take a chance, I'd have to be, for two, so.
Yeah, I think, and I agree, I think I would be less confident if this were day one of the business, but as an expansion, I.
Show the business.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's.
And it's established, loans are rolled over, like, say. Okay.
I know, good, retiming.
Andy, I need to put the brochure forward on that one.
Uh, no, it was like, sorry.
There's bed no more. Alright, I'll offer. Mark to offer a second? Thank you, roll call votes.
Uh, yeah, uh, Mark Walchek?
Aye.
Matt Beck?
I'll need to stay on this one.
Cheryl Reese?
Aye.
Frank Pettaplace?
Yes.
Edward Watts, that's it, Jessica Seer?
Aye.
Daniel Roth? Uh, motion pass.
Um, just before we get to the adjournment, I, you know, we had a little presentation for Joe.
Also, I had one, kind of, new business idea, you know, my, I'm thinking, man, it ties in with this block city, rather than having. We've got a heck of a business corridor there on Route thirty, and, um, I would like to try to propose, we work with the town and the city, and possibly national. It gets some really nice lighting from Block City all the way down through Market Street, if you go there at night, it's very difficult seeing. And this project in particular is gonna, you know, they've counted walkways and bike lanes to get to the business districts, service side. It would be very nice if we had really nice lighting with lamp poles and, uh, additional bus stops, or we have to stop for the launch.
Thank you.
I bet something that you got to look into.
National grid, that's a funny day.
National grid and C D T A, and with the, with the L E D lights now, we could, we could do purple and gold, like, for the Instagram colors. Yeah, really nice business corridor, because we get a tremendous amount of traffic through there, and there's a lot of businesses there.
Great recommendations. Anything else when you're doing that, and you're in the college, don't go away.
If you could all subscribe to our YouTube page, uh, just because, you've had some requirements about, if you're, uh, if you want a live stream, you can have that certain number of subscribers. So, supposed to be live streaming our public hearings, uh, but we're not able to yet, so, you know, if we get ten more people or so.
Yeah, remind us of the email, please.
So I just, I know we recognized Joe earlier, but this, I've heard was gonna be his last official meeting up here in the county for Dan, and. You know, some of the people who didn't get to work with him, Joe, it's just a, just an amazing human being, we said nice things about him earlier, so I'm not gonna say him again. I am just gonna say thank you for mentoring Chris, because we feel like we are in great hands now with Chris. You still may need to do a little personal, aside, which he could do a, 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 Joe, so, I'm always looking, yes, I'm consulting.
I, I plan on doing some mentoring with him over a couple of cold beers, seriotic.
In, in Austin. And, oh, seriously, congratulations, thank you, everybody.
For everything that's been so great. It's been, I'm glad it's all, it's great, it's very, very good, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe, I was just wondering, I was just wondering if there was another plan that we were giving you.
Oh, well, we had opened a bunch of, uh, it, it is guy, I mean, I walked right around the office, you know?
That was such a right.
Yeah, Chris has got a lot of things to do to get one of those. You've never been in those, and it could be all court filming.
Not yet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for bringing that up.
And, Joe, we are gonna make you a man slip.
Yes, you're very high, you don't need to say anything, very, very. So, we got, we got all this guy last time, I'm not. Yeah, you can come up anytime you want, alright? Um, can you vote for adjourn?
Motion.
This is second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you're opposed, same, we're not in this business.
Happy holidays, everybody, merry Christmas.